Call the order of the City Council meeting for CDB's Grand Forks Tuesday, May 3rd, 2022. City Clerk please call over.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Riappell.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Fetter.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark D'Amers.
Present.
Brian Larson.
Here.
Does turn corn please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have an open forum opportunity for members of the public to address the City Council on items not on the current agenda. Items in the current council action may be referred to staff boards or commissions for research and future council agendas if appropriate. So anybody want to address the council on items that are not on the council agenda at this time?
Briefly with Mayor Gander and he indicated that even though the permit was on the agenda this evening, that you could still take short comments?
Not at this time, sir.
Okay.
I will address that though, sir.
I just, I guess I don't know if anybody was here to speak to the, there was some talk about talking about the water issue on the.
Do you want to just come up to the mic, state your name and your address ma'am, please?
Janine Purcell, 2137 7th Avenue Northwest. And we had a lot of water, more than any that I've seen in the city because we drove around and we. It stayed until late Monday morning. And I just want to know if anything has been done to even why it happened? It's been getting worse and worse every year. Now, of course, this was the worst that we've had, but there's got to be something that's causing it. And I would like to know what, and I would like it remedied.
Jason, do you want to come up, sir, Mr. Sordal? Jason's the Public Works Director, so.
What was your address again, just so I know where we're talking about exactly?
2137 7th Avenue Northwest.
Okay, got it.
Thank you.
Hi.
So there was nothing wrong with our system at the time. There's a lift station that moves water out of that area with two pumps and the two pumps that were in there were working 24 hours nonstop. There's a series of culverts and stuff that also push it through the big swale into the ponds at the, at the golf course. One of the biggest issues is the quick amount of rainfall that we had. We in the city of Grand Forks also spoke with the National Weather Service about it. We had around three and a half inches of rainfall, but they said that the top four inches of the soil was saturated in thaw, but saturated. And when we had that rainfall, the cooler frozen ground below act with like capillary action pushed a lot of that water out. So not only was none of the water absorbed, it was all shed off. Where typically in a summer storm or something like that, the, the ground would take up some of that water. So, so all the rainwater was shed off through capillary action and the more humid air above is what they told us. It actually sucked some of the moisture out of that top layer. And then the snow piles that you saw sitting around were saturated with obviously heavy, heavy wet snow. But when the rain rained through that, it reduced those piles and there was more moisture. So it was just, the system was inundated all the way back, that whole area by.
Why that area? Why just that area?
It wasn't just that area, it was just that area that stayed longer. No, it was all over town. Our, our lift stations, not only stormwater, but sanitary lift stations were inundated all over, even on the south end of East Grand Forks.
I was there and I didn't see water like I had on Monday morning.
Right, it was higher up there.
Yeah, it was. It was so high, I couldn't drive my car through it. That's how high it was. It was on my front lawn. So I can't see anywhere in town where it was like that. We got in the pickup and we got out of there and we had to go very slow. And we looked around town. There was no place in town that was like the north end. So you can come up with your excuses, you can come up.
It's not an excuse.
Well.
I'm just saying everywhere, everybody had, had water. You were higher there on 8th and on the end of 5th or kind of as you go south on 5th. They're low points. 5th Avenue Northeast was the same way for a while, not as long as, as you guys were up there, so. It's no excuses, it was a big rainfall and.
So every time there's a big rainfall, that area town is going to flood like that? And I'm going to be flooded for three days where I can't take my car out? Is that what's going to happen? Is that right?
We hope not.
Well, I hope not too, so I'd like to know what's going to be done about it.
Well, we're working on it right now to try to.
Any ideas?
I mean, we're discussing with the city engineer on, on things that we might be able to do, but there's, the administrator and I talked to a few people up there too. And in order to change the system, it's gonna, it's probably going to take a lot.
So I'll probably move before anything gets remedied?
We will do what we can do with, with the money, with the funds that are available.
Just like 20th with the big crack holes and the fight that's going on there to redo that street? Now, could anything be there causing the backup? Could pipes be broken underground or water not getting out?
There's always a possibility of something, but to our knowledge, there's nothing wrong. Everything seems to be flowing right as far as the system, what the system can handle. We don't know of any blockages that were anywhere. There was a culvert that was partially blocked, but it didn't impede enough. I mean, the, the water that was coming through there, you couldn't shove any more water through it anyways at that point. So there's nothing to our knowledge, but we are going to be, we have a, a crew up that's televising our sanitary storms, our sanitary sewers when we do a cleaning, so we're going to have them clean the, a few of the areas from 5th up to the swale or up to that big ditch north, from 8th over down 22nd is our plan to have them televised, just to make sure that there isn't something impeding it. But it, it does act like, like the system's functioning properly. I mean, as the water, as the water went down to the west of your place, street by street by street. But then there's a smaller pool of water there to drain from. And at that time, we not only had the natural system, but we also added an eight inch diesel pump, a six inch diesel pump and a 10 inch Navy pump, all the same to pump that down. So with the other two 26 horse pumps, there's five going plus the gravity. So, I mean, we were doing all that we possibly could. There was nothing more we could have done.
You know, I can see it flooding because of all the moisture we had.
I hear cut out.
Question for you ma'am. Mr. Better. Has this happened before or is this during the summer or just in the spring?
It has stayed like this before. I mean, even during the 97 flood, it didn't stay like this. I don't think.
But if we have, if we have two inches of rain during the summer, it pools up and stays?
It won't stay as long, but we will flood. So that's why I say, you know, I've lived there for, since 1990. And every year it gets worse. So do I have to move? Is that what I have to do to get out of that situation? Or is something going to happen? I mean, I can see the pumps going and I can see you're doing all you can do and the system was working at its max. But obviously the system isn't working then. There's something wrong with the system. And I pay taxes just like everybody else in this town. Why do I have to live on a street that gets flooded whenever we have a rain? I don't think it's right. Another thing I don't think is right, which is completely out of the subject, but is that roundabout. I, I go to the point a lot. I love go to the southern a lot. My daughter lives there, I babysit for her. And to tell you the truth, I don't think there's enough traffic to warrant it. There may be traffic, maybe a half an hour, hour maybe in the morning and maybe at night. That's it. And every time I've been out there lately, at least with this pandemic going on, I have not seen the traffic. I've been out there at 7:00, 7:30, 8:00, 8:30. I've been out there at 5:00, 4:30, all times. And I haven't seen the traffic that warrants it. That's just my opinion. So back to my flood.
Jason?
Are we going to do anything?
Question if I may. Does that water all run west or does it go to the ponds and to the north and the golf course?
It all goes to the ponds. I mean, there's some that drains, none of it drains west.
So could there be such a thing that maybe our pond level's a little bit too high or not? Or does that have anything to do with it?
No, because the waters, it, it gets to the ponds in three different ways. So there's, there's a culvert or a pipe, a significantly large pipe that comes in from the west to the. If you're on River Road, the first pond that you'll see to the east, water flows in there from, from the, from that area. If you go down further to the east, there's a gravity pipe that flows into the swale. Well, there's a couple of different gravity pipes flowing the swale. So when it gets to the swale and actually gets to the northeast pond where probably two thirds of that water goes, it flows by gravity and it's pumped there. So it's pumped with two 26 horsepower pumps and they were going and we verified that the water was flowing through that pipe like it should have in two different ways. And then there's a gravity ditch that takes it to when it gets over full. The ditch was not only full and shooting into the pond where you could see it coming through the culvert, but we also had a six inch pump up there pumping to the pond. So it was more than what typically goes into the ponds and there's no way for it to backfeed in there. It's just elevation wise it. I mean, eventually I suppose it would get up high enough, but it wasn't, it wasn't at that point at all. So it's, nothing's coming back into the system.
If I could interject, I, I think you can see it's going to require an engineered fix. So we can't stand here tonight and say, here's how we're going to fix it.
No, I don't expect that. What I expect is this is what we're going to check in.
Yeah.
This is what we're, we're thinking might be the problem where we could probably fix it or maybe help it.
So whether it's the sizing of the system or the slope on the gravity fed portion or whatever it might be, we're going to have to study it and we're going to have to put a cost factor to it and we're going to have to fix it. Because I agree, that, that part of our community, even, even as far as let's say 21st over to 6th. Okay, that was kind of deep. That whole way it got, it got deep. And I know if.
Yeah, it wasn't just my street.
If I know anything about Tim Riappell, he's not going to let this go away either.
Are you too?
Not at all.
So I, I think you can count on us studying it, putting a price tag to it and, and starting into, and making it better. I think you can count on that.
How long do you think that would take, maybe a year?
You'll see some action on it right away. Now, how soon? We have a fund, a citywide fund for, for stormwater drainage and we're going to have to operate within the confines of money that's available. But you'll see action right away.
Thank you ma'am.
Then do I have to come to another council meeting to find out the action?
We would love to have you back.
You bet.
We'll try to get it going.
Ruth Ann Schleif, my address is 806 22nd Street Northwest. And I just want to add the, the question whether it just happens with this perfect storm of things event. That particular intersection, 8th and 22nd, it, this is not the first time that it's happened. And it's when we get a big rain, even in the summertime, even when it's dry, when we get a big rain in a short period of time, that particular intersection is affected, a day, two days, something like that. Now this time when they got that extra pump going by Monday morning when we got up, then everything was gone. But I couldn't even have gotten a note. I have a pickup or I had a pickup in my driveway and even with pickup, I couldn't have gotten out because it was way too deep. So it sounds like there's going to be something looked at for, you know, 22nd and 8th in that, in that neighborhood. But this isn't the only time that it's happened. It has happened even in the summertime, not just when the, the ground's been frozen, so.
Thank you.
Thank you ma'am.
Hi Alan, I'm Bruce Kifanime, I live on 2131 7th Avenue Northwest. Mayor Gander, council. Concur with just about everything that two previous talkers said. I was up at about 4:00 AM on the 23rd and already there was six to 12 inches of water on the, on the driveway. And the strange thing about it, it didn't go up or down. There's a mark on my driveway, I watched over the whole weekend. And the only thing the city did to remedy it, so it seems, is to put a barricade on the streets, affecting hundreds of people who couldn't really drive in and out unless they had a pickup. Middle of the street, maybe six inches, right on the curb, probably a foot deep. Cars couldn't drive through there unless they wanted to, you know, unless they had good door gaskets. But the strange thing is that the water level didn't rise or, or lower from about 4:00 AM on Saturday till sometimes in, sometime in the middle of the night on Sunday, early Monday morning. Thank you.
Thank you sir. See no others. Move on to approval minutes, consider approving the minutes of the work session for East Grand Forks, Minnesota. Council of April 12th, 2022. Move. Second by Helms, second by Better. Questions or discussion? Roll call please.
Mers.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Fetter.
Jeff.
Helms.
Yes.
Riappell.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Holstead.
Yes. Motion is carried. Schedule bidletting there is none. Schedule public hearing there is none. Move on to the consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda will be adopted with one motion. However, council members may request individual items to be pulled from the consent agenda for discussion action. If anyone liked two through four polled. Entertain a motion of two through four. Move. Second by Better.
Second.
Second by Johnson. Questions or discussion? Roll call please.
Mers.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Fetter.
Yes.
Helms.
Yes.
Riappell.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Holstead.
Yes. Motion is carried. Acknowledge of receipt of reports officer doors and commissions. Regular medium minutes of Water, Light, Power and Building Commission for April 6th, 2022. Regular medium minutes of Park and Recreation Commission for March 16th, 2022. Communication there is none, old business there is none. Move on to new business, number seven. Consider approving a special use permit with the recommendations that were provided by staff. For motion.
Motion to approve as per staff recommendations.
Motion is there, second.
Second.
Mr. Johnson seconds, Mr. Riappell first. I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Murphy.
Okay. Thank you council president. So the item that is before you tonight is for a special use permit to operate a hot mix asphalt plant on property that was recently annexed into the city and is owned I-2 general industrial. I-2 general industrial zoning permits all uses in I-1 light industrial zone districts along with heavy industrial uses. General manufacturing, indoor storage units, wholesaling, auction houses and antennas are allowed without a special use permit. Heavy industrial use project, excuse me, heavy industrial uses such as bulk fuel storage, concrete mixing plants, recycling yards, asphalt plants, et cetera, are allowed by special use permit. Special use permit provision is in place to allow that the, to allow uses that have the potential to affect other properties by placing reasonable and prudent conditions on the use of the property to minimize any impact to the greatest reasonable, to the greatest extent reasonably possible. The special use process requires the applicant to submit an application. Staff then reviews the application. The planning commission then calls for and holds a public hearing and provides notice in the official newspaper at least 10 days prior to the hearing and mails written notification to property owners located within 350 feet of the subject site. In this case, the planning and zoning commission and city council both held public hearings on the application, which is more than required. Once a public hearing is closed, typically a public comment portion of the process is completed. So with that being said, staff has reviewed the application along with the recommendations coming from the city council, the applicant and from the public comments in the public hearing and has compiled the following recommended conditions to be placed on the use. So I'll go through those here just real quickly and you'll indulge me. One. The road leading to the site must be hard, a hard surfaced roadway within three years unless otherwise agreed upon by the applicant and city council. If dust becomes a nuisance, the piles and/or gravel road needs to be watered or calcium chloride needs to be added. Three. While the asphalt plant is in operation, the city's noise ordinance will be followed. This condition is applicable only during the operation of the asphalt plant. An annual decibel test taken during operation will be submitted to the city. Four. They must follow the Minnesota Administrative Rules Chapter 730 regarding noise pollution. The, the land use activity that would be, that would be, would be used is classified as a level three under the noise area classification. Five. Require a dry hydrant and water retention pond to hold 1,000, 120,000 gallons of water at any given time to meet the Minnesota in city fire code requirements. Six. The asphalt plant must hook up to city electrical service once it is available at the site. Seven. A topsoil berm is required on the south end of the property and larger trees or a hedge row will be planted on or near the south and east sides of the property within five years. Eight. The plant operation cannot be substantially modified without city approval and at the city's sole discretion. The site will allow a maximum of 300 tons per hour operation average per year. Nine. The asphalt plant must be in substantial compliance with all city, state and federal permits, including the air emissions permit and the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System NPDES permit. All monitoring and emissions reports submitted to the state or federal governments must be submitted to the city annually. So with that, with those, with those conditions, I as the city administrator recommend the approval of the special use permit with those conditions listed.
Thank you sir. And Mr. Galstead, do you want to make some comments, sir?
Yeah, the only comment that I would want to make is I know that Mr. Jeffrey just indicated that there might be some ability to have some short comments at this point. I just don't want any confusion or misunderstanding is that the public hearing has actually been closed. So that any submissions that have already been here, discussions, testimony, exhibits, emails that are already been provided by the time that the closed hearing was submitted and closed are a part of the record. Any comments at this point in time are outside of the, are outside of the, the public hearing and are not a part of the record that would be utilized in establishing findings of fact, conclusions and an order if this matter is approved. If it's not approved, then it really doesn't matter. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody was under that understanding.
Thank you sir. Before I get to the council for questions or comments, I'd like to address, I will ask if the public wants to make comments. I would like to respectfully limit it to two minutes and not rehash, will be rehashed at the public, public hearings. But if you'd like to come up and utilize two minutes, that'd be great and not at this time. Once I get through the council if there are questions, then I'll move on to the public and then we'll go from there. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that, so. Does council have any questions or comments at this time? So if anybody in the public wants to come up and address, state your name and address.
Good afternoon, I'm John Jeffrey, I'm with Huntsville Township. I live at 43125 200th Street Southwest. The city council, you know, the, the issue before us is trying to determine whether or not this is going to be, you know, impacting your citizens, our citizens. And up to this point, you know, we've had all this information, but it's still, you know, he said, she said. You have a tool to fix this and that's that interim use permit. Originally when they applied, there was a discussion. In fact, I think Nancy's PAC had talked about a review in three years. And then somehow we just progressed to the point where now it's all or nothing. So you have the ability to do that interim use permit. You vote this down today, that under Minnesota law, Zavro's can apply for that interim permit, you know, tomorrow. And within 60 days, you have to act anyway. And more than likely, you can do that much more quickly, you know, and, and run that through and then give it for a specific period of time and then reconvene three years down the road. And now we can see, okay, you know, were the concerns legit? Did we have these problems or, you know, did everything just turn out great? And then the, the other thing to keep in mind is with regards to the conditions. There's no condition to address odor. The screening, I'm not quite sure why you have to wait five years to plant trees or hedges, you know. So we're not quite sure what's going there, but I mean, I think that's a great idea. I'm just not sure why you have to wait five years to start, you know, planting that, that barrier. You look at what Mindot has there with the big trees, you know, to the north, I mean, pine trees. That seems to be a good way to try to cut down some of, some of these concerns. And then lastly, with regards to, you know, the criteria on noise, it sounds good, but I checked, you know, it's level three. That's the loudest that you can have. So it's just the normal thing for industry. And so, you know, we can put it in there, but I don't know really, you know, what exactly that's all going to do. So what we're advocating is turn it down, turn around and, you know, Zavro's already agreed when they were at the county last year at this time, that they would do a deal for one year. And that was because I think they realized, you know, during that hearing that they were in a losing position. I asked John about that. It's in the record and, and at that point, they said they would put it on that location for a year. So, you know, to give it three years, it, it seems like it's, it's a reasonable approach. And then you don't have to set the precedent that somehow you guys open this up and then those folks on the point or whoever's ward it happens to be, you know, suddenly they're not only smelling crystal, but now they have crystal flavored with whatever else is coming at them. That, that seems to be a, a way to deal with that. And maybe we get three years down the road and nothing happens. And then, then we move on and give them up, you know, the, the permit that they're looking for now. Thank you.
Thank you sir.
My name is Rob Raymond, I live at 17702 429th Avenue Southwest. I've been getting calls, I'm tired. I've been getting calls every day, nonstop for weeks, people that still have no idea that they're trying to get this pushed through. Just some of the, the papers, some of the names that have signed to vote against this. I've gone over data pertaining to noise, odor, chemicals, traffic, aesthetics and more so many times. I'm not going to beat a dead horse, but there's one more thing that I want the council to know before this vote. A retired judge actually heard about this and contacted us to say Minnesota Statute Section 56101 defines a nuisance as anything which is injurious, injurious to health or indecent or offensive to the senses or an obstruction to the free use of property so as to interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of life or property is a nuisance. Now Minnesota courts have found the following activities to be public nuisances. Accumulation of filth, offensive odors, gases and gas odors, including those emitting from gas plants, petroleum tanks and engines, smoke, dirt, cinders emitted from chimneys and smoke stacks and noise. Now for public nuisance, since it affects the community at large, now these are enforced by city action, i.e. prosecuting attorney, Minnesota law defines a prosecuting attorney as a city attorney, county attorney or the state attorney general. Now private nuisance actions can also be maintained by the person who is affected by this nuisance. Now while cases, law indicates business should not be destroyed unless necessary to protect another's rights, abatements have an order that have closed down legitimate businesses in the past. I talked to the neighbors of the Zavro plant outside of Thief River Falls. I grew up next to them, I've known them my, my entire life. They said if they're operating, you might as well not even plan on going outside. They said the noise, the smell is ridiculous, she has to hose off her deck every single time that they are running that plant. They have no plan. Are they going to run the old plant, bring it here? Are they going to build a new one? One more reminder and thank you for your time. Now even though the Zavros continue to say they're way below MPCA limits, that's kind of misleading because according to Zavro's, Zavro's own information, they gave the city council, they reached almost 25% of yearly thresholds for some of those toxins in about 12 days. So what do they do after 12 days? Do they quit? Do they stop the job? Do they build another plant? There's a lot of concerned citizens in East Grand Forks. We're hoping you vote against this. This might not be a done deal if you're voted in favor for this plant. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you sir. Anybody else have not?
Kerry Spolowski and I reside with Kelly Driscoll at 42813 170th Street Southwest. I am concerned citizen of the township and the entire city of East Grand Forks. This plant is entirely too close to our home. This plant is entirely too close to our home, to our schools, to the farmers, and the nearby businesses. I have a child that has severe asthma along with allergies. I am a huge advocate for children, so I speak on behalf of them, along with our family. We think you are taking a huge risk to us by all placing this in city limits. If you say yes to this plant being set up, you are taking away the farm-to-table due to contamination, taking away the businesses that have been struggling for the last few years due to COVID, taking away from kids' outdoor activities, taking away from people's homes for generations, not to mention the land that has been in the family for over 100 years, taking away freedom to enjoy the great outdoors. Let's face it, we all wait for this time. Taking away the beauty of living in the country. You are taken away from our community. Give all these things a serious consideration because you will not get them back if you approve this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
You all know me, Kelly Driscoll, 42813 170th Street, Southwest of East Grand Forks. When you guys are voted in, you're voting in for the people to talk, right? I mean, you're supposed to listen to what the people say and you bring it to the table, right? Am I right? So why wasn't everybody in East Grand Forks sent a letter knowing that what Zavro's are going to put in the city of East Grand Forks? I remember there's only a few that only live 350 feet. That's what I want to know. Why isn't this getting out to the public? No one can answer that, or what?
Certainly, I guess I can, I can address that. According to our ordinance, when you have an industrial zoned area, that's where the industrial uses go. That's, those are the allowed and allowable uses. So like I said earlier, we have, there's the generally allowed uses, and then there's the uses that are allowed by special use permit. Special use permit, then you put the conditions on it, and according to our code, according to state statute, we notify affected property owners that are within the prescribed distance, which by the state is 350 feet.
Yeah, but you guys are speaking for the people. When the people don't know what's going in there, you're only speaking for yourselves right now. So how can you even vote on this?
I guess if I could interject, you know, we put our meetings online, we have the media pick up on everything we're doing.
Not everybody's got a computer.
I get it, and yet the media do pick up on it, and then the chatter starts around the community, and we love it. The fact is, you know, people have gotten the word, and that's exactly why this place is full. So I think...
You know why it's full? Because of us? Doing the sign thing and letting it out there. That's why it's full. It's not because of you guys. You guys don't even answer your phones when we call there to ask you questions.
Oh, I don't know. I've returned every call, I've returned every email.
I've called many of these guys, they don't even pick up their phone. Come on.
Could I leave a voicemail, sir?
No, I did not.
We have day jobs that we work at.
I've called many times at each phone, though. It's not that you're that busy.
We want the word to get out, and this is how it happens.
Send a letter to every household that's involved in this and not involved in this. I mean, it's the city of East Grand Forks. All the people in city of East Grand Forks are concerned about this, but a lot of people don't know about it.
I think they do. I really think they do know. I mean, it's been talked about pretty extensively for several weeks, and that's a good thing.
Everyone I've talked to, the Kruegers and whoever, most of these people that are here today did not know about it. So you can't say that everybody knows about it.
And not everybody would read it if we mailed it either. So it's going to take...
Probably would if it involved the city of East Grand Forks.
It's going to take time.
They read your newsletters, I'm sure, if you ever send any. The other thing is, I watched last week's meeting. You guys went and tested a generator at Sacred Heart School. Now, that generator is specifically made to be next to a school, made to be next to houses. It's got special exhaust system, a special for it to be quiet and all that stuff, and you go and do a decibel test on that? Why didn't you go do a decibel test on your own generator? Can you explain that? I didn't think so.
My name is Jenna Carter. I lived at 5560 Gallatin Circle. And just a note, you guys do not answer your phones. Tim Johnson, I called you every day last week, and I was unable to leave a message because his voicemail's not set up. Pretty sure if you are a councilman, you are supposed to be available to the people. I spoke with Brian Larson. He flat out told me, I asked him, would you want to live next to this? And you said no. Exactly. How would I tell my two-year-old and four-year-old, no, guys, you can't go outside today because there's too much, there's too much stuff in the air, we'll get sick? Would you do that to your kids? Would you say that? And then what would they do? They would cry, throw fit. How are you going to deal with that? That's, how are these people going to deal with that? Del Helms, I spoke with you. You said, well, it's no worse than the fertilizer the farmers are putting on their crops. We both know they're carcinogens, right? Just so you know, a carcinogen is a cancer-causing agent, just so you all know. I don't let my kids go eat fertilizer or play in it or whatever. No sense. And honestly, it is an injustice to the people of East Grand Forks that you all sit up here, you don't answer your phones, you do not advocate for the people, which is your job. Honestly, I would be ashamed of you all, and I'm glad I do not reside in East Grand Forks. Yes.
What is your telephone number, ma'am? I called you back.
I have my phone right here. What's your number?
Well, it's 218-7...
Hold on, hold on. Let me bring up my recent calls. Go for it.
218-791...
No. Not today.
My telephone, 773-8552. If you come and look at my phone, you can see that I've called you...
791 what?
Excuse me?
Say your phone number again. What number did you call me from?
My cellphone.
Which is? Oh, yes, you called me this morning. I've called you...
I called you three times.
You called me this morning at 9:27 a.m. One missed call. I called you all week last week.
I called you three times.
Maybe that's because you were passed out drunk like at the Sacred Heart Fish Fry Line. And that should be, and you were his prosecutor, that should be a conflict of interest.
Okay. With that, I want to move on, and if anybody else wants to make closing comments, Pira there? Dave, did you want to say anything?
Dave Zavro, Vice President with RJ Zavro &amp; Sons. I reside at 40504 215th Street, Southeast of East Grand Forks. And I wasn't a member of the technical team that Zach and Dan and Joe and John, but I would like to share just a few things about our business and who we are and where we are. I'm a third-generation business owner with my family there, and I know the guys have heard me talk quite a bit about our core values of a business. We have safety, accountability, integrity, teamwork, consideration of others, and pursuit of excellence. Safety's been brought up quite a bit on all the comments that we've heard, and just this past offseason here, I was, I was able to receive a award on behalf of the business from ABC, Associate Builders and Contractors of Minnesota. We received a platinum-level safety award, and members of the, a business that receives a platinum-level safety award is 242% safer than the Bureau of Labor's average. So we take safety seriously and definitely are committed to it for not only our crews, but our families and our community. Integrity and accountability, we work in a very heavily regulated industry. We've heard many environmental concerns and regulations. The technical team has hopefully answered your questions when it comes to those. We trust OSHA and the MPCA, and we'll look to them for their guidance on how we will continue to eliminate these environmental concerns. They are there for a reason and a purpose, and we strive to be compliant in all areas of our business, not just our asphalt side of our business. Pursuit of excellence, last week at the work session, there was a question asked to John about the length of our business, if we're committed to being in this community, and it is our vision to continue to be a premier employer in our community for many years to come. And John and our team are committed to not having this asphalt plant be a blister in the industrial park, but a shining star for the industrial park. Consideration of others and teamwork. Our team that we work with, they hear a lot about family values. It's in our mission statement, family values. We are a family. And as you guys probably know, families don't always get along. And I work with my family, and it's true. But, you know, at the end of the day, we are family, and we are committed to being there for each other and working together to get, to grow together. And that's the same approach that we are planning to take with our neighbors in this situation. These neighbors that we will be, that we will be working with, we see them. We see them at church, we see them at the Blue Moose, we see them at ballgames, we see them at Hugo's. We are committed to this community. We know the concerns of the community will only go away if we continue to live these core values as a business. So in closing here, I would just like to thank you for the time for this process that we've worked through and for your civic leadership and duty. So on behalf of RJ Zavro &amp; Sons, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any from the council this time? If not, I'll ask for roll call. Roll call, please.
Demers.
Epstein.
Larson.
Yes.
Better.
No.
Helms.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes. Motion is carried. Move on to number eight, Consider Adopting Resolution 22-05-36, approving the joint powers agreement between the city of East Grand Forks and the state of Minnesota regarding the Minnesota Internet Crimes Against Children's Task Force. Move. Move by Riappel.
Second.
Second by Demers.
Yes.
Questions or discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Demers.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Better.
Yes.
Helms.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes. Motion is carried. Move on to number nine, Consider Adopting Resolution Number 22-05-37, approving and authorizing a grade change for the part-time seasonal general park worker position to be placed on a grade nine and the campground assistant manager position to be placed on grade 11 on the seasonal pay scale. Through motion. Move by Demers.
Second.
Second by Larson. Questions or discussion? Mr. Better.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Murphy, did we get an answer to, can we move them around on the scales based on their job duties?
Yes, basically, because of their ties with the campground, yes, they would not be, it would not, it would not affect our other part-time positions.
Okay. Anything else? Not roll call, please.
Demers.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Better.
Yes.
Helms.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes. Motion is carried. Number 10, Consider Proving the Off-Sale, Week-Daily, and Off-Sale, Sunday Liquor License Applicant Renewals, as listed below A through F. Move. Move by Riappel.
Second.
Second by Better. Questions or discussion? Mr. ... Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Demers.
Thank you. Are all these in good standing at the city?
Yes, we have checked with them. They are in good standing with Water and Light and all the other city offices.
Thank you.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Demers.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Better.
Yes.
Helms.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes. Motion is carried. Number 11, Consider Proving the Off-Sale, Intoxicating Liquor License Applicant Renewals, A through B. Move. Move by Riappel.
Second.
Second by Helms. Questions or discussion? Yes, they're in good standing. Roll call, please.
Demers.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Better.
Yes.
Helms.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes. Motion is carried. Number 12, Consider Proving the Off-Sale, Non-intoxicating Liquor License Applicant Renewals, A through B. Move. Move by Riappel.
Second.
Second by Helms. Questions or discussion? Yes, they're in good standing. Roll call, please.
Demers.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Better.
Yes.
Helms.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes. Motion is carried. Move on to claims, Consider Authorizing the City Administrative Clerk Treasurer to Issue Payment on Reconciliating Bills and Payroll.
Move.
By Johnson.
Second.
Second by Helms. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Demers.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Better.
Yes.
Helms.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes. Motion is carried. Core Gander.
Thanks again for everybody involved in the flood fight. I know we're pretty well set up in the river level of state high, and we got a second crest, a third crest, and here we are. And thank the American people for our great flood control system, but really, our local folks who have assembled that, and it's keeping the water out, we appreciate it. And also, thank you to Nancy and also to our planning commission who took the front-end work and the heavy lifting to get this whole thing started. Thank you to Steve, thank you to Ron, thank you to you, David, and everybody involved in this, a team effort to work this through. It's a challenge, and we appreciate it very much. Thanks.
Mr. Better.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Mr. Helms.
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Riappel.
I thank Bruce for staying around. I will follow through on that water problem because I had, down my street, I know exactly where you're coming from, so we'll take care of it.
Mr. Johnson.
None.
Mr. Demers.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Larson.
Nothing tonight.
Did you?
Mr. Storedahl, I have a question for you. Can you maybe, again, I know it's been out in the media, when is spring cleanup? And just kind of get us what your, for the next two weeks, what's the transition into that spring cleanup?
So we'll have our hazardous waste electronic drop-off day this Saturday at Public Works. Spring cleanup will be the week of the 16th now. We decided, along with Grand Forks, to postpone that a week and now two weeks because of the bridges being down and because of staff working on flooding-type activities. So we're hoping to, we'll have to see what the, what the weather forecast looks like